East Hampton Village Zoning Board, we are live.
Good morning and welcome to Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Friday, August 8th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. McMullen?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes, here.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Full slate here today. Can I have the minutes from July 11th, 2025? Can somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have four determinations today and the entire files are available at Village Hall. Mr. McMullen was the chair on the first determination. Regarding to the determination, the application of Brian Stanis, 74 Mill Hill Lane, Sub County Tax Map Number 301-8-4-41, to construct a single-family residence and accessory buildings and structures is denied with respect to the request for an area variance to construct a residence containing 2,073 square feet, a gross floor area where the maximum permitted GFA is 1,883 square feet, and granted with respect to the requested area variance to permit 2,234 square feet of coverage where the maximum permitted coverage is 2,166 square feet, and the requested area variance to construct a swimming pool 15 feet from the rear yard lot line where the required rear yard setback is 20 feet. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Gabby, can you please poll the board?
Mr. McMullen?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Mr. Rose is chairing the, well, chairing the next determination here, reading the next determination.
In the application of 100 Montauk EH LLC, 100 Montauk Highway, SCTM Number 301-7-2-22, the board now issues a negative declaration for this unlisted action pursuant to secret and further resolves that the application for a special permit to change a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant use to an office use with two apartments is granted, that the application for area variances for coverage setback and height relief is granted, and that parking relief is granted with conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, can I have a vote?
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Next, Rose. Next item is the application of Linda A. and Richard E. Willett, 56 James Lane, SCTM Cross Hatch 301-8-9-4, for wetlands permit and area variance to legalize existing patios and to construct pergola. That is granted. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, please call the board.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Okay, the application of 68 Woods Lane LLC, 68 Woods Lane, Sub County Tax Map Number 301-8-7-44, for area variance to construct in addition to an existing residence is granted. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Gabby, can you poll the board?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
We have one adjournment today, 26 West End Road LLC, 26 West End Road. We do have one application that has to be re-noticed, Stanley De Jong Osborne and Virginia Osborne, 27 Hunting Lane, and now we have a continued hearing for 64 West End Acquisition LLC, 64 West End Road, and can you please? Can you please let the board tell who's sitting on this application?
We have Mr. McMullen, Mr. Rose, Ms. Fitzsimons, and Mr. Darko.
I'm going to get up. Good morning, Mr. Ackerman. How are you?
Good. So, we're continuing the macro application. Rich Warren has been working with Billy Hayjack when revising the site plan, the revegetation, the reconstruction plan. So I'd like Richie to get up and give you a short synopsis. You should have copies, Richie. They have copies of everything.
Okay, yeah, we do.
To Rich, would you?
Mr. Warren, I'm just going to swear you in. Can you make sure the microphone too is sort of, yeah, there we go. Thank you. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Richard Warren, 36 Newton Street, South Hampton, New York.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic? I'm having trouble.
It's okay if I pick it up. My mic's a little short for somebody like me.
Yes.
Good morning. You know, at the June meeting, I was here to report about a site inspection that I had with Billy Hayjack and several members of the town trustees. And the result of that meeting was that we really needed to revise the landscape plan for the property. But when I was here before, we presented a bunch of drawings for you. This one, which was one of the important ones, which was the drawing that was part of the original construction of the house, that showed the improvements that were located on the east side of the house. This is east this way, the improvements on the east side, the improvements west side, retaining walls, swimming pool, et cetera, and the driveway configuration that was there. So when we finished the work for the revision of the plan, we submitted a new package back to you, and we had to revise the landscape plan. We had to clean up the engineering plans by Drew Bennett and the survey by Dave Saskas to make sure all the plans match. So I'm just going to kind of run through those quickly for you. The Drew Bennett plan, that's this drawing here, this is the first sheet that shows the area of the patios that are going to be removed, all shown in purple here. That's the area on the east side of the residence constructed without approval. This is the patio on the west side that exists with retaining walls in that area. This is the plan prepared by Drew Bennett that now shows the hopeful end result for this. We've had him correct the areas that were around the patio that was pre-existing from the original construction here. There were some retaining walls to deal with the grade changes. This shows the topography on his drawing now within this area that matches the topography at when this was constructed and for which a CO was issued at the time. The walkway is the same on this side. So this returns, the area on the east side returns it back to what was there. The one exception would be the driveway. The driveway used to come into this end of the house here, the garage doors entered on the east side of the house in this area, and that was changed where the garage doors now enter on the south side of the house, so the driveway was reconfigured and actually pulled a little bit further away from the wetlands. This also shows the area of the landscape that is proposed. The Saskas survey was revised, so now this survey now matches the drawings we have both from Jim Grimes as well as the Drew Bennett drawings. I believe you have a full set here of everything that now matches. And then this is the plan that probably took the most effort to change. When we were out on the site looking at the conditions with Jim Grimes and Billy Hayjack, there was discussion about the original landscape plan that was prepared for this by Aris Design, and there was a, and also the plantings that were along the shoreline through here that had been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals in 2017, and there was a concern about the survivability about that material. And as you probably know, Jim Grimes, he did a fairly large landscape restoration project, native landscape restoration project, just across the other side off of Chauncey Close, you know, several acre property that was really quite successful. So we actually brought him in to redo the landscape plans, and he provided some different plant materials for these areas in terms of improving their chance for survivability. The boundaries of the landscape restoration are essentially the same as what was on the Aris Design Plan. We, one of the things that got corrected in the process that was omitted unintentionally was that there was a request when we were out on the field to remove the Miscanthus, which is a New York State invasive plant here along the street front. You used to be able to buy it in landscape yards. You can't buy it now. And now we have shown that to be removed on the plan. These were submitted last week to the board, so you have that in your packet. But the Miscanthus is going to be removed. It's going to be replaced with switchgrass. So...
Placed with what?
Switchgrass. Switchgrass, a native coastal grass. So to the east of the house, the area on this side, we're returning everything back to what was there before that matches what was constructed for which a CO was issued. And we have, we had submitted previously a copy of the survey and the CO, so this way you can actually compare that if that's what you want to do. You have that from the original submission that we gave to you. On the west side of the house, we're asking for approvals to allow the patio in this area to remain. We put a drawing together which we thought would be helpful for the board. So this is, this is the surveys that September 2017, this is the area on the west side of the house. So that it shows what was done when a CO was issued in terms of construction, walls, patios, and this is the current survey on this side, and the middle is an overlay of the two. And the area shown in green is the area that shows the difference in the patios. And it's relatively insignificant in my mind. The areas that are changed in terms of patios, these are landscape beds up above the retaining walls through here. You can see these original retaining walls through here. This says planter beds. These were planters in these areas, so arbor. And so what happened was that in this area along the side of the pool, when you looked at the old photos, which actually provided in the last submission, you could see you couldn't even walk around the pool. So in this area, they installed a, above the retaining wall, they installed a series of stone so that this way you could at least walk around the pool. So from a safety perspective, it's actually safer because now you can actually get around the pool. Then they infill these planter beds through here, which you can see here in the green. The areas where there is a little bit of deviation is up in this area where the stairway, you can see here it was curved. Now you can see it's like T-shaped, so there's a little bit of change up in this area. We actually don't believe that it's a meaningful change from an environmental perspective. It's in an area that was lawn before, and then there was a change down in this area through here where there used to be a building, a shed, a utility shed, and now it's just a piece of patio that has an outdoor shower on top of it for someone when they're getting out of the swimming pool. And then we also provided for you, so you can actually see it if you wanted to, an aerial photograph. This is 2017, and that's current, so you can actually compare the two as well. So when you look at the change in the retaining walls, there were some change in the retaining walls in this area. There used to be two, three walls. There was a wall that defined the upper edge of these planter beds, the patios and the swimming pool. There was an intermediate wall and then a lower wall. Maybe it's easier if I go back. Oh, here, there are the walls here. Now there's only two walls. There's a wall that defines the upper level of the patio and then a lower wall that has a landscape bed in it through here. In the north end up here, these walls have actually retreated a little bit, so they're not as close to the wetlands as they were before. So, but it's generally the work that's happening in this area is all within areas that was disturbed before. So we were asked by one of the members to identify the elements that are included in the plan to be removed and what we're asking to keep. So patios and retaining walls on eastern side of the residence will return to the existing condition. The landscape lighting that's not located on existing buildings will be removed. The irrigation heads within all areas will be restored with native plantings will be removed. The four black PVC drainage pipes that extend into Georgica Pond, they will be removed. They're located right in this area through here, and we believe that they're just taking a roof runoff in this area. The kayak rack that is down in this area is going to be removed, and lawn and non-native landscaping is going to be removed and restored with native plantings. The areas we're asking the board to allow to remain are the additions to the swimming pool patio, which are in this area up above the retaining wall. The stairs providing access to the grade at the north, which are up here. Replacement of the equipment shed down in this area with a small patio that has an outdoor shower. The adjustment to the driveway, where the driveway now is actually further away from wetlands, and it's actually smaller in terms of site coverage that when we calculate the coverage, it's actually went from 4125 square feet to 3905 square feet, so it's actually less than what was there before. And the retention of the existing driveway gate that was down here. But environmental mitigation for the project includes installation of subsurface drainage control, which is in Drew Bennett's plan, it's shown right here outside of the buffer to capture the roof runoff that is coming out to the piping. And then also something that is included in the plan that's on Drew Bennett's drawing is a replacement of the septic tank with a hydroaction low nitrogen waste treatment tank. So that's going to improve effluent quality as the sanitary waste goes into the groundwater that bleeds the adjacent surface waters. The restoration plan by Jim Grimes shows the restoration of everything on the western side with the exception of a small four-foot wide path so someone can at least get around the edge. This landscape bed that's here that currently has paca sandal will be removed and planted with native grasses. And then pulling back of the lawn on the eastern side in this area, and then the street front removal of Miscanthus. So the approvals that we need to get finished with this project, we need to get past the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're hoping that we've addressed the concerns that have been raised. I'm here to answer questions with that. We have, we're waiting to hear from New York State DEC about a meeting. This is a settlement conference that was taking place about two years ago on this. I wasn't involved in that, and we've called to reschedule that so we can resolve it at the DEC level. East Hampton Town Trustees, which we will be going before them. Once we get past you, we go to the town trustees, but I don't want to be bouncing around with different plans. I'd like to know that at least we're moving in some succession here. Then Health Department approval for the sanitary system, which Drew Bennett's handling. We provide a construction protocol. Drew Bennett prepared that, and that's in your file for you. So we believe that we've addressed the concerns that the board raised at the last meeting. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have relative to this.
Okay. Does any board member have some questions? Joe?
A bunch of questions, but you made a reference to the irrigation heads being restored, which...
The irrigation heads that are within all the areas that are to be restored to native landscaping will be removed. We will have temporary above-ground irrigation during a grow-in period because we want to make sure this stuff gets established.
In-ground irrigation in the lawn?
Yes.
Was that pre-existing to 2017?
That I don't know the answer to. Well, actually, this plan here has a notation over here that says irrigation. No irrigation water shall spray to hit the house. So I assume that means that there was irrigation on the property.
If we can, if you can report back in terms of what the, because there's no in-ground irrigation allowed for new, for any new in-ground irrigation.
Within a certain distance.
Within a certain distance of the pond, and I'm pretty sure everything in this property is within. So if you can find out what the case was.
I'll do the best I can. I don't know whether I'll be able to find that, but I'll get back to you with whatever I can find.
I don't know if you have this information, but what was the height of the building with, of the shed where the pergola now stands?
That I don't, I don't know.
That would be, that would be good to know because, and contrasting that height to the height of the existing, of what was, that which was built, because it's very visible from the pond. I don't know if the previous one, what the height actually was. Also, on the retaining walls on the west and other, but there are, as was raised at the last session, there's lighting that's installed in there. We talked about the removal of the lighting.
Yeah, we're removing that.
That's to be removed.
And then last question is the, so the part of the patio by this, there's, I guess, to the north that you have in green on your, there's a large bulbous white sculpture that's in that location right now.
You can see it on the, on the right-hand photo up top there, a little further down.
Yeah, highly visible from the pond, bright white like the rest of the house. Is that, it's the intent to maintain that sculpture in that location?
Suggestion. As far as removing irrigation, I mean, you know, I think the determination should provide that it's to be removed. I mean, we're not asking for that. Sculpture to be removed, okay? I don't believe he's going to sell the house with the sculpture. The height of the shed building, I think that we could, we should be able to provide that without any issues. No lighting in the retaining walls, of course, no lighting in the retaining walls. So Joe, whatever you think we should, I mean, whatever you're recommending here, of course, should be a condition of a determination. Is there anything else?
Anybody else have any comments?
I thought I saw lights also under the trees, not attached to the infrastructure. Is that being removed?
Yeah, removing everything that's not attached to any building.
Okay.
Excellent. I would ask, Billy, do you have anything to add to this? That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Richie. Good morning, members of the board. Billy Hayjack for the village. Mainly to answer any questions that you have, if you have any, but I would offer that the plans have been adjusted pursuant to my requests, so the grading on the east side is, appears to be returning back to what would appear to have been the pre-existing grades, and we have a plan by Drew Bennett that shows the proposed grade. The construction protocol is fairly thorough, and I think addresses any questions that I would have. And the revegetation plan has been adjusted. They've added, you know, substantial amount of woody vegetation with herbaceous vegetation. The removal of the invasive grasses on the, along the roadway is a benefit, which I appreciate changing the plan to do. So if you have any, that's my comment in a nutshell, but if you have any specific questions for me?
If you don't, but thank you.
I have, I have a question just for Billy because I, even with my glasses on, I can't read the print. What is, on the northeastern portion, right now, there's a sort of lawn area that goes up to the house. It's clear to the pond that you can see from all the way to the east. I gather that area is being filled in with planting?
Some of it is. They're keeping a band, they're proposing to maintain a band of lawn around the improvements, presumably for access.
But I'm, but I'm...
There is revegetation proposed on the north side of the staircase.
Place where you see, there's a point where there's a view card or straight to the lagoon, I guess, you know, pass all the way down to where you get to Georgica Road. You can see, and you know, obviously with the house being bright white, it's even more visible. But, and there's a lawn condition that goes down to the water.
That's being revegetated.
That's being revegetated. What's, what is the planting? I don't know if you're the right, but...
I don't have the plan memorized to that degree, but there is a mixture of shrubs. There's no trees proposed, but if you'd like, you know, some screening or something, trees, I'm sure that's...
Is it the same, I mean, I get the question, what's the height and what's the nature? And maybe the applicant, okay.
I have it here. So in that area, it is baccaris, which is groundsel bush. They're 10-gallon containers, so they're probably three to four feet in, yeah, three to four feet in height, five feet in height. They do grow. The maximum size they'll grow is probably seven feet or eight feet. They don't get much taller than that.
Is this equivalent to what Jimmy Grimes did on the other side of the pond?
I would say, yeah. That was more of a meadow. You know, I would say, I would characterize the other project as more of a meadow type of restoration. That was an old farm field.
I'm talking more about the shoreline condition.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah. It's roughly the same.
A great risk and peril I paddleboard about to get a sense of what the condition was. And on the other side of the pond, it looks, just some details about what that is.
The one, the one thing this doesn't include are trees.
Right, no, I understand.
Generally, we don't...
I wasn't saying trees.
Yeah, okay.
Seems to me that the plan that Jimmy Grimes has presented us is pretty hardy for what, and fully landscaped.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? The one question I do have for, maybe this is for Tim. If we were to grant this, is there a thing that we can put in the determination or is there something that maybe Mr. Ackerman would like to present to us for timing? I know this has gone on for a while, and we'd like to, once we approve this application, I'd like to see that maybe in 90 days or...
Well, we still have, we still have trustees, we still have DEC, and we have Health Department. We're not going to be able to pull a building permit until we have all of these.
All of those.
Right. So from the, from the point at which we pull a building permit, it's also weather dependent. I just want, yeah, we just want to, Richie. And we really want to keep our foot on the pedal here. Okay, so do you have a timing sense, Richie?
To be perfectly honest, to get through the process with the other agencies, my guess is this is probably a spring installation. Because the DEC, when you go to deal with them for a violation, which is what we're doing with the order on consent, which is ultimately how this would get resolved. We have to have a compliance conference with them. They come up with a, with a decision that gets sent to Albany. They look at it. They send back a draft for the owner to sign, and then you sign it, you pay a fine, then that goes back to the state, then they sign it, and then they ultimately give you the relief of that. And that's probably at a minimum of like three months from the time, from the time we have a meeting, from the time we have a meeting, which we're still trying to...
So can we condition this once a permit is pulled? They have a certain amount of time to execute this plan?
Just a second. Yes, I mean, you can do that. You can also have a tighter time with the understanding that you might need to come back and ask for extensions of that in light of the progress on, you know, your applications to these other agencies, but that would give the board a way of, you know, some assurance that those requests for extensions, you know, should demonstrate that you're actually making progress, you know, as opposed to...
What I was going to suggest, Tim, was, and Jim, was that on a monthly basis, once you close the hearing, presumably if you're going to close the hearing today, on a monthly basis, we're going to report to you. There will be someone here reporting to you of where we stand. And I think face-to-face, not in writing, but face-to-face, that's the best way to monitor this. You really, where are we next month? Where are we with the DEC? Where are we with the trustees? Where are we with sanitary? And keep things moving. That's the only way I believe I can move this thing along as quickly as possible by reporting to you because then I have a, you know, mechanism of enforcement. by reporting to you because then I have a, you know, mechanism of enforcement. Okay, so I'd like to do that. Any other suggestions? I'm open to, of course.
I mean, just on, I mean, I think what I was suggesting is sort of the same thing as what you're suggesting, except that if if there is a deadline, you know, the the reporting, it would be in connection with, you know, seeking to extend it.
No, no, I understand, but but I do think that when you bring someone up here, just like you know, from court appearances, these judges always have these conferences, where are you with discovery, where where are you with your motion practice and the like? We need to do that in this case because that will push us along and push us along faster. Okay. What would you want to say?
I think.
Joe?
I like the idea of face to face meetings, but I think there still needs to be an outside date.
No, no, I agree. I agree, but I really think that, yeah, I'm on them too. I'm on everybody, but when someone has to be here, whether it's me or Rich or Drew on sanitary or Rich on DEC, it certainly helps moving things along. That's what we like to do.
I would just recognize that, no, it's August now and three months from now, it's November, December, and we're not planning in November, December, we're not planning in January, February, we're probably not planning in March. So there, we do have a seasonality in terms of the the restoration work we have to deal with as well.
I would recommend that we give them a 90 day period from the time that they pull their permit. Obviously, they have to get through all these other boards and municipalities, so we don't have control over those.
Yeah, but.
They have no control over the agencies. I mean, it's silly to impose something because I go through this process myself all the time. He has no control over the judge's calendar, DEC, it's going to be purely arbitrary and I believe a waste of the board's time to to say, okay, well, you have no control over three agencies. I'm going to throw this out there and good luck to you, come back in next week. As opposed to you pulled your permit and you have 90 days to go.
I'm just saying there could be intentional delays on pulling the permit and I think we want to get this done, right? So.
I think, I think they want to get it done also, and I think.
We're anxious to get it done now. Now, if you, you want to explore this now, if you will give us a building permit to start immediately, there's some, we could start demo. Why not? To start demo?
Let me just say to you that we can't do any work on the property until we settle with DEC. And that means that we wouldn't pull a building permit until we have DEC approval because part of the demo involves the sanitary system and all this stuff. And because we have to do all of the demo before we start doing any restoration, we need to be able to have all our permits in place before we pull the building permit and the permit from this board for the work with respect to the wetland setback.
We do need it. We do need an approval from them.
So my, so my suggestion is set an approval date that's maybe sometime, say that the work has to be done, say by next spring, conditioned upon reporting with with the opportunity to get to grant an extension if we report satisfactory progress.
Or accelerate if we get it sooner.
But we don't, one of our problems, and I think we've pointed this out to you before, is depending upon whether this gets resolved, some of the plantings might be seasonally sensitive. That is to say, there will, there will come a point where we might not be able to plant certain things or they might not be available and the planting season would extend until the fall. We want to do this as quickly as possible, but we, we don't want to be in the situation where we have an approval that we can't show to these other entities and and get the approvals that we need.
So is that something that we can do, Tim, in the determination?
Yes, but I would just say, you know, again, the, you might want to set a deadline that even seems implausible given the current constraints, but that would be a time for the demonstration of the steps that had been taken to that point to be made in the context of a request for an extension.
What would you be thinking is the appropriate deadline?
I mean, I don't know if, if six months, you know, obviously you're talking about certain things that are out of your control with the DC and certain seasonal things that are out of your control in terms of whether the plantings would happen in the spring, but there should be a point at which not just on a sort of informal reporting basis, but that you come to tell us you need more time and this is what we've done so far and this is how far we have to go.
Six months to pull a building permit?
I mean, I just threw that out out of nowhere. I don't know if the board has a different.
Just so I want to be clear, there's because there's a difference between pulling the permit and getting all the installations done.
Yeah, you want us to not only pull the permit, but you want to make sure we do the work.
Well, normally this board sets a, you require that the work under the building permit be completed within a certain time, but if we could have at least six months to pull the building permit, that might work for us.
Yes.
Joe, I'd like to go just retreating back into the real world. I think I have, I have some substantive issues related, my understanding, and I may be incorrect, but that this property is currently on the market or about to be on the market for sale. So who knows what's going to happen in terms of who the purchaser is, when this work gets done, how, how that all happens. And so this may be sold pursuant to an approved set of variances. I'm more concerned about the substance of what we're approving that will be, you know, and obviously we want it to be, the work to be done, but we don't know even who's going to be in charge of doing that work. And so I think it's really important that we pay attention to the substance of what it actually is that we're approving. And I just, I have on the, I just want to make it clear, this is comments, I think I, the questions, we're waiting for the answer back, but I'm glad to hear that the lighting's going to be removed from the retaining walls and the, all the things that have been mentioned before. I do want to understand in terms of the pergola and the increased patio deck in terms of correcting what the egregious nonconformance of an existing set of condition, does that, so the particular sculpture, which is going to be removed, presumably just the owner's sculpture and will go with him when he sells the, the house, but the patio, then someone could put a new sculpture or if the patio is approved is my, what's, what happens with that area that was planter that's now going to be patio and can stop? And that's a very visible place from the pond. So what happens on that patio? I think we need to have answers to those questions.
Well, obviously, if someone's going to put a sculpture there, they're going to have to come back here, I think.
That's, I don't know what the answer to that question is. If we, if we legalize a patio that currently is not allowed.
Well, you can't anticipate what a future owner of any property.
But if we, if it's, if it's not, my understanding, and I may be wrong, but that's, if we have, if there's a patio, now there's not allowed to be a patio there. There is a patio, a patio was built in violation of the regulations and a sculpture was put on that patio. What's now being asked, as I understand it, is to retroactively legalize that patio. The assurance is that particular sculpture will be removed, but if we legalize the patio, does that?
But it's still within the wetlands jurisdiction. We still, they still have to put anybody as.
Whoever buys it will have to come back to us anyway.
Is that, is that, I'm not sure that's, I get Billy if you can speak to that.
It's within wetlands jurisdiction, so that we have to come back.
If it's, if it's going to be a structure, it's within the wetland setback.
It depends what a structure, the definition of structure and definition.
Yes, but that.
There are questions. I'm not, I don't, I don't know.
No, no, we're not, we're not going to argue with you. What we'd like to do is close the hearing so that you can have a vote and we can move forward. Every month is delaying resolving this, so as soon as we can close the hearing, let's go forward and we'll have to deal with all these things.
I would be okay with closing the hearing, but we do need an answer from the question regarding the shed height compared to the pergola height. If we can get that.
I'm uncomfortable closing the hearing until we have a full set of answers.
Which other answers are you?
The height, the questions.
Here's what I'm going to.
They've been delaying this for the five years that I've been on.
Mr. Rose, if we have an elevation that shows the shed, we'll be able to tell you the height of the shed. If we, if we don't have an elevation that shows the shed.
We'll measure it.
Well, it's not there anymore. We can only tell you the height of the pergola that now.
I understand if you could find the.
I know, but to delay another month, get the height, that's not really in the community's interest, is it? Another month of this egregious violation? You want this over with, Mr. Rose. Let us get on with our life and get it over.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying not to.
Close the hearing and let's have a vote and see who agrees with you or who disagrees with you, but let's at least move this thing forward. It's going to be tissue bug before we finish this.
How do you feel about that?
I don't, how do you close the hearing if we're waiting for information?
You're waiting for, you want to know how many?
One, one piece of information.
You want to know how many inches the previous shed was.
And the answer and what happens with the patio. I think I, this has been.
Patio, they're, they're keeping the patio.
The violations were created in 2017. It is now 2025. The property is for sale. The work is not going to be done until the property, the permits are issued by DEC, the property is sold and some new person, new owner brings this into conformance and will, and obviously there are things we're going to require, but it would not shock us, I think, if we hear, oh, we want to change this this way or this that way. So what we, what our parameters are is this is a step in a long, unfortunately, ongoing process, could have been resolved, again, it was, the application was before us to address the situation, again, when I joined this board five years ago, and it was pulled by the applicant and not by, pulled by us. We didn't delay it. So an additional month, I'm pretty sure getting it right is the number one priority and whether it's, and as counsel and others have said, we need to make sure that this does get done, but it's not going to, but we're being told by the applicants and, and I think Sean made a good point, there are all sorts of variables in terms of when this is going to happen, the judges and.
I would start the process, I think the height of inches on the pergolas on material, as far as the statue goes, I have statues that are on my lawn. You don't need a, you don't need a patio to put a statue on.
So, so let me.
Future application. I would, I would say get the process going and hold their feet to the fire on the monthly showing up and encourage them to be here and report and if there are variations.
So let me, let me just reiterate regarding Joe's questions. The irrigation in the lawn and everything is to be removed. The height of the shed and the, compared to the shower pergola, we're waiting on an answer for, which they said that they will give us in two weeks. Lighting in the, the wall and out in the, in the trees is going to be removed. The sculpture is to be removed and the patio that was filled in, that used to be planter bed is to remain. That was, that is your request and that's what's in front of our board to determine if that is what we want to approve or not. So that being said, I think we have the answers to all of our questions that we had. So I would feel comfortable closing this and determining where we want to go from here. Is that summed up properly?
Please, that's good summation.
Let me ask one question. If the height comes back from the original structure and that was two and a half feet below what it is today?
If it's, if it's the board's wish, then we can grant the approval for that or we can deny it. So it will be written in the determination from counsel.
And again, just to make the point, I think the question is the visibility of the structure from, as far as I'm concerned, from the pond.
I think it's.
As it was, that's one thing. If it's different, that's material. That's, I just want to be clear, I want to be clear to the, my fellow board members what it is. I'm not, you know, trying to play games with inches. It's a question, is this something that materially affects the, the criteria that we are charged with protecting?
Yes. Billy, you said you had one comment?
Good morning again, Billy Hjak for the Village. So the normal routine for variances that are granted by the board, retroactive approvals for structures that were put in, is to provide for 90 days in which to get a building permit. My recommendation is you stick with that requirement and if the applicant has to come back and get an extension, they can explain what the holdup is, where they stand with the Health Department, where, I mean, as, as Mr. Rose indicated, since been kicking around for, I almost started at the Village and they had plenty of time to apply to the Health Department and get DEC approvals. I know they want to segment it and drag it out, but, you know, I don't know where the litigation stands. I mean, I think it's still in litigation. So I, I think the board should stick with their normal course of procedure, require 90 days to get a building permit. The building permit's valid for a year, so they'd have plenty of time after that to execute the project. And if they can't get a building permit in 90 days, they come back and ask the board for an extension. And then you can decide if it's a 30 day extension, a 60 day extension, a 90 day extension. I, that's, I don't know if Tim has anything to add, but that's my recommendation is to just continue the normal path of.
Excellent. Thank you, Billy. Appreciate that. So again, I would, I would look to close the hearing for determination.
As long as the issues, let me just, as long as the issues are on the table and we're addressed and our determination takes that into account, I don't, so is there any, I guess this is my last question, is there any, any substantive point that we need to discuss regarding this that we haven't, that would be precluded or that would impinge on our ability in terms of drafting the determination that we haven't discussed?
No, I mean, I think a lot of the recent focus is on the restoration parts of this. The, the ask, right, in terms of the variance is what you're maintaining. So maybe if you want to reorient us to, you know, that west side and what the actual variance relief that you're seeking for, the maintaining the existing structures is, that's, you know, that's, that's the actual substance of the application. A lot of it is contingent on the rest of the parcel being restored to its preexisting condition and that's been a lot of the focus of the technical discussion. But just to remind the board sort of why you're here in the area variance sense, you might just talk about that.
We'll do that. We'll do it very shortly.
That's sure exactly what I want.
My understanding is that we need wetlands area setback variances in order to do the demolition as well because we'll be working in the setback area. Am I wrong?
Can I say that again?
My understanding is that we need variances on the wetland setback in order to do the demolition because this entire parcel is within the wetland setback. So even to do the demo, don't we need a variance from this board to do the demo?
Well, that's the, that's the element of relief. Let, Richie, just, we're going to give you, let's not get too technical here because then it's over my head. Richie, just quickly, just tell them what the variances are for on this side.
I don't think we need him to go over this again. I think we know, I think we know.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
What I would do is move to ask for a motion to close the hearing and then we can go through our determinations next. Do I have a motion?
Do.
Actually, you're not sitting on the.
Oh, yeah.
Joe, so second?
Please.
No? Okay, then I guess we have to leave it open for next meeting.
Is that it?
I didn't get a second from anyone else, so we have to leave it open for next meeting.
I'll second it. I'm okay. If we get the information we need and we can adjust the determination.
Okay. Thank you. Meeting's closed.
Thank you very much.
For work of a determination.
Two weeks to get your information.
Or sooner, or sooner.
Thank you.
I'll go out and measure it myself if I can find the issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, let's, we have a continuing hearing on House on the Pond LLC, Ten Lockwood Lane. And who, just so we all understand, she's going to say who's sitting on the applications.
We have Mr. McGurk, Mr. McMullen, Mr. Rose, Mr. Barris and Ms.
We have Mr. McGurk, Mr. McMullin, Mr. Rose, Mr. Barris, and Ms. Fitzsimons.
Thank you. Morning. Morning.
I'm just going to swear you in. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Susan Briarly, 15 Toils, Himalayan East Hampton.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Hello, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Susan Briarly. I work for Dewey's Planning and I'm here today representing House on the Pond Incorporated, who received approvals from this board in 2022 to raise an existing one-story cottage on the pond and construct a new two-story structure somewhat out of jurisdiction. During the course of construction, there were variations that were, well, they, they appeared on the final survey from Tim Taylor. That final survey revealed that we would need five additional variances in order to be able to close our permits with the village and the county. The first variance is a 1.9-foot variance for the swimming pool that was constructed too close to the wetlands at 148.1 feet. Approximately four square feet of the swimming pool sits within jurisdiction. It is the corner of the pool. We believe the error occurred when the pool contractor aligned the edge of the swimming pool with the foundation wall of the house, failing to stake the pool properly. The second variance we're seeking is a 16.2-foot variance for the pool fence that was also installed inside of the 150-foot setback. We believe this was also an error made by contractors just not paying attention to the proper surveys and staking things correctly. Third variance is for grading and fill as shown on the final survey dated December 12, 2024. This differs from what was approved. The intention of this project was to excavate, use the excavation from the, the new house and the swimming pool to remediate the area where the house had been removed down by the water. Unfortunately, it appears that the contractor used the project limiting fence as his limits of grading and he filled in where the house had been removed and he graded backwards, not paying attention to the plan. Our fourth variance is for drainage structures. The 2022 approval demonstrates precast drainage structures around the perimeter of the house. The change was made to drainage chambers when the village building department requested the architects provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan or a SWIP, which altered the original drainage plan. As noted in a memo from Mr. Hayjack, the contractors were notified to follow the approved drainage plan. The drainage plan that exists today is what the village consulting engineers approved on June 9, 2022. The SWIP, in fact, is the approved drainage plan that the contractors followed. The change led to the location of a chamber system within the 150-foot setback, placing the chambers 133.5 feet from the wetlands, requiring a 16.5-foot variance. The final variance we believe we need in order to, to close this matter is a 12.5-foot variance for a miscellaneous rock wall on the southwest side of the property. This is, it's a 25-square-foot area where small and medium-sized rocks were embedded into the grade of a sharp grade change. It's a very small area. It was really simply done to address a sharp decline over a very short distance. I'm not sure I would even call it a wall. It's less than two feet in height. And that's it. Those are the five variances. We're requesting that the board grant these additional variances to allow the improvements as demonstrated on the survey prepared by Timothy Taylor dated December 12, 2024 to remain. The circumstances are unfortunate, however, the variances are not substantial, nor do they represent an undesirable change or to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby communities or an adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions in this neighborhood. By and large, the end result of this project, even with these variations, is, is the house is still consistent, the, the project is still pretty much what was intended.
Thank you. Can I ask Billy? Billy, can you make some comments on this before we go to the board? We did do a memo on it in November of last year. And just for the record, this, you came to us for a variance in 2022. Now you're coming back for five variances that we granted you relief from. So we, other variances we gave you relief from. So I just want that for the record.
Good morning, members of the board. Billy Hayjack for the village. I did provide the board with a memorandum. I tried to summarize the project and the course of events that occurred. In terms of the drainage, that it was an oversight, the village engineer was unaware that, the consulting engineer, I should say, was unaware that there was a previously approved drainage plan that this board approved. So he reviewed the SWIP. There was drainage proposed as part of the SWIP that was signed off on by, by Vin Goriello. So that's what the contractor followed. So that was in, call it an oversight on, on the part of the village. I, you know, I don't, not sure the end, the contractor, I guess, was unaware that there was a previously approved drainage plan, although I did provide him with a copy on multiple occasions. But that didn't change the dray, the grading that was approved. You know, the grading that was shown on the SWIP plan was the same grading that this board approved. And I would say that when this application was reviewed by the board or heard by the board originally, part of my review and analysis was the, you know, the lack of change to the property in terms of elevation grade and all the, all the topography and the filling in of land was being kept beyond the 125-foot setback, and that's all crept closer to the pond. So I, you know, I, whether it was an oversight by the contractor, I, I don't know. I can't, I can't say that. But that was an oversight on the part of the village. The only error that was, occurred was for the drainage. I mean, I, I, my comments are outlined in my memorandum. If you have any specific questions for me, I'd.
Board members, anybody have any, want to ask Bill any questions? I think the pool is in. It's, it's a two-foot variance. I think, I know I can get over it. I'd like to see the pool fence moved hard up against the pool. I think the village signed off on the drainage, so I'm okay with that. You know, I don't think we can do anything. The grading is wrong. I think the grading needs to be fixed. And I think you may be of natural landscape buffer. I mean, I know we had some issues there on the.
Well, the original buffer was installed with the incorrect vegetation. That was erected to a degree. They since added some evergreen trees that were not part of the original plan. They were, those trees were removed and a new cedar trees were installed. So I think they're asking to keep the, the buffer the way it presently sits. The, the added vegetation, which was non-native or a horticultural variety of the hibiscus, was added in addition to the buffer, so.
Again, I'd like to see what the plan that they presented to us originally, that's the plan they follow. That would be my take on this. But board members?
Yeah, I, I agree with the chairman. The pool location is something it's in and everything, so I can let that one go. The drainage structures, obviously the village said yes to. I do have a problem with the pool fence as well as the grading. This, this is self-created by the, the contractor. He, he didn't follow the plan that was approved and everything. And I, I'm not sure if, if he corrects the grading and the fill plan, if that two-foot or two-foot-high, 12.5 square foot rock wall variance would go away.
Yeah, it's possible. I don't, I think that's the part of it, is that it's holding back the fill.
So I think if the, if the grading is, is redone and the fill is removed, then we don't have a problem with the rock wall. So I would be able to look, overlook the other two issues, the pool and the drainage structures.
I have a low threshold for the contractor ate my homework excuse, but the, I do, we think that to the extent that the village planner and the, and the comments for the chair and the vice chair are adhered to, we can find a satisfactory resolution, including making sure that the buffer, the pond buffer is the appropriate vegetation and, and that's, that's critical, that it be done to the, the full degree of what we want.
I mean, just to clarify, they're asking to keep the buffer the way it sits now, which is native plants. They've added some trees, which I personally don't object to. But if it's, if that's what the board wants, then, you know, I think the buffer stays as is.
As long as the buffer, I mean, does it meet, does the change, does it meet the criteria that we have established and the?
Yeah, the, when the board originally approved this application, the buffer was only 10, the proposed buffer was 10 feet. The board asked that it be increased to 30 feet. I believe that was a recommendation from the trustees, town trustees. The app, the board approved the 30-foot buffer subject to me signing off on the, on the plan.
And is the buffer irrigated?
It's above-ground irrigation in the.
Okay, and when's that get pulled out?
Two growing seasons.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Billy.
Any other questions for me?
Nope.
No. Susan, do we have a, do we have the new landscaping plan with the trees in it?
Yes.
We do.
I'll submit it. I don't believe the trees have been installed yet, though. They're sitting on the side, side of the yard waiting for permission to install them. And the idea of those trees is simply to block the view from the parking lot to their house.
Got it. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Anybody in the, in the audience? Motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second. Thank you.
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of reopen.
Motion to reopen the hearing.
Proceedural here. We have to.
Yep. Second, please. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So the work has certain, it sounds as though certain work has to be corrected.
Yes.
Would the same conditions of the approval prevail where they, in order to get a CVO, the applicant has to submit an as-built grading and, you know, a topographic survey so that we are aware of what, that it's been corrected?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Just making sure that we have it correct.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're moving on to the new hearings of the day.
Application of Martin Scheinman and Lori Scheinman, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-5-2-9.6 for variances from Chapter 278 zoning to legalize the construction of a sculpture. A two-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3D8 to legalize a sculpture structure with a height of 16 feet where the maximum permitted height of an accessory structure is 14 feet. A 19.7-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3A 5A to legalize a sculpture located 55.3 feet from the front, a front yard lot line where the required front yard setback is 75 feet. The subject property is 139,933 square feet in area and is located at 189 Further Lane in Residence District R160. This project is classified as a Type 2 action in accordance with SECR.
Good morning. We proceeded our memorandum yesterday on August 7, I believe, so we're probably going to leave the hearing open because we usually like to get them in the Friday before. Okay, just so you.
The memorandum is really for this, the lot line modification.
Yep.
Application as opposed to this one.
I'm just going to state who's sitting on the record as well. Mr. McGurk, Mr. McMullin, Mr. Rose, Mr. Barris, and Ms. Fitzsimons.
Good morning, a little more, I guess it's good afternoon now. Elizabeth Baldwin, Essex F. N. Angel, Datalia Pesca, on behalf of the applicants, Martin and Lori Scheinman. We are here today to seek two variances for the installation of the Gaetano Pesh sculpture, Double Hearts. I wanted to give some background on the artist, the sculpture itself, and the extensive installation process. The artist is Gaetano Pesh, architect, artist, designer. In a 40-year career, has carried out public and private projects in the United States, Europe, Latin America, and Asia in the fields of architecture, urban planning, interior design, industrial exhibition design, driven by the constant tension towards innovation and experimentation. Pesh's multi-disciplinary work is represented in the permanent collections in most important museums in the world, including the MoMA, Metropolitan Museum of New York, the Victoria and Albert Museum in London, the Center Georges Pompidou in Paris, the Vitrum Museum in Germany, and the Montreal Museum of Art, to name a few. His approach to design has been marked in history and his works have been celebrated in exhibitions of extraordinary importance. The sculpture itself is known as Double Heart. The sculpture created in 2022 during inspiration from a lamp the artist had designed in 1969. The motif of the pierced double heart has featured throughout Pesh's drawing practice. The piece embodies one of the key principles of Pesh's artistic philosophy, the idea that contemporary age should engage with the exuberant joy and romanticism inherent in so many objects and humans alike. The sculpture was part of a large exhibition by the Louvre and was displayed at the entrance to the garden adjacent to the museum. The installation process was a very, it was a long process that involved the artist himself. The applicants spent months in discussion with Mr. Pesh and his representative regarding the acquisition of the piece. Specifically, the artist was particular about the location of the piece and that they had to provide him with the precise location or he wouldn't agree to the access, acquisition. In fact, they promised to meet the specifics, specifications and ensure that should they ever leave Further Lane, and if they couldn't find an identical location, they would donate the piece to a museum. The artist's team in New York and Europe controlled the crating, shipping, and set forth the methods of installation. He was personally involved in planning the installation, which was estimated to take five days of, of installation by two crews of about five people. It turned out to require three crews working over a 10-day period. It took eight months to get the piece to the applicants from Europe, and unfortunately, while the sculpture was in transit, the artist had passed away. His teams told the applicants that this installation was one of the last things he worked on, as this was the culmination of a creation he had been contemplating for more than 40 years. His teams in the U.S. and Europe monitored the installation process by a real-time face, by a FaceTime to ensure that Mr. Pesh's vision came to fruition. With regard to the variances, unfortunately, at the time of installation, the applicants didn't realize the sculpture would be considered a structure in the eyes of the village and required a building permit or that it required to meet specific setback and height requirements. While my initial thought was to simply move the sculpture to a conforming location, height, while a height variance would still be required, my clients explained that the location of the sculpture is actually part of the artwork itself. The artist was personally involved in picking this precise location of the sculpture and the extensive installation work was required to properly install the structure. With regard to the standards for variance, the undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, no, we do not feel the installation of this structure, of this sculpture impacts the character of their neighborhood. Specifically, the sculpture, the sculpture is located within the applicant's property, which is heavily, heavily screened by existing vegetation. While considered an accessory structure, the sculpture is not a structure that contains any living space or would be used by the applicants in a way that would be considered to be a nuisance to any neighbors. No complaints have been filed with regard to the sculpture. With regard to benefit sought by the applicant achieved by some other method, unfortunately, because the artist has since passed away, they can't reach out to him to see if there was another location on the property that would work for him. Also, the height is, would still be an issue, even if we were able to find a conforming location as far as setbacks, the height, it would still need a height variance. The installation process, it took 10 days to move this structure again, creates a danger of negatively hurting the structure or impacting it or, and, and the applicants would not like to take that chance. As far as, is it substantial? No, we don't think it's substantial. It's, the, the applicant's required to meet a 75-foot setback. The sculpture meets a 55.3-foot setback, so a 27-foot variance. Considering the size of the property, I don't think that that's too big of a difference. The park, property itself is large, it's well-screened, and the vegetation mitigates any, any negative impacts. As far as the height, 14 feet maximum is allowed for the sculpture and it's currently at 16 feet. The sculpture is not something that you can just reduce the height of. It's, it's, the sculpture is, is what it is, and so unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to lower the height. But again, the property is well-screened. I did some drive-bys today just seeing what it looks like and, and you, you can't see it from the road. see it from the road. The property is very well-screened. Let's see. And then adverse impacts on physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. There's no nat, natural features that this would impact. It's not near any wetlands or near any dunes or anything like that. There's no beach vegetation to be concerned about. It's basically set in the applicant's lawn in a specific location to maximize, or to, to display it in the, in the best light. As far as self-created, yes, obviously, they installed the, um, the sculpture without, um, the proper permits. However, I think in this situation, the applicants just didn't realize that art was considered an accessory structure within the village, um, and therefore needed to meet any specific setbacks or required any building permits. The location, however, here, was specifically picked by the artist, so a variance request, um, and, and let's see, what else? And I think the benefit to the applicant is definitely outweighing any potential detriment to the neighborhood. This is not visible from either Further Lane or from Cross Highway. I think this sculpture is well-hidden by, behind existing vegetation. Unfortunately for the rest of us, we don't get to see it, but, um, I don't think, uh, it, it impacts the neighborhood in any way. And I think East Hampton has always been a, a village that has supported the arts in, in, in the community, and I think, um, this is one of those situations where I think that, um, supporting the, the location and the vision of the artist is, is paramount here.
Thank you. Board members?
There is one, um, piece of information in this packet. The, uh, the information shows that this is lit. Is this something-
So, so technically, yes, it does. It, it does like a soft glow. They don't use it. They've, I asked them about it, Billy had mentioned it to me. They've used it twice since the entire installation. It's not something that they're, that's, that wasn't the draw of it. And even lit, it's, that, there's so much vegetation on that property on, especially on Further Lane, that don't, it, it wouldn't have that impact. But they're not, this is not something that they put on a timer that comes on every day, you know, when, at dusk, you know, year-round, or even in the summer. They, they, they've told me they've put it on twice. And there was some, when, when they acquired the piece, the artist had informed them that displaying the piece at night, you know, is something that you would do, maybe if you had a dinner party or a cocktail party and you had guests to, to, to sit and view it, but it's not something that you would just put on like a, your house light, you know? It's, it's something that's, um, would be used, would be done at a specific time, not, not on a daily basis.
But they still have the ability to turn it on?
Correct.
Okay, so we went on a little field trip, and you can see the, uh, the Double Hearts, uh, from Further Lane in. If you, you know, you want to keep it lit or keep it on, I would really like to see a landscaping plan for Further Lane, so you can't see it at all. I was with, uh, Billy, we, we could see it, we tried to get into the property, but, um, the gates are there and we couldn't get in. You can see it from the stop sign at, at Further and-
Oh, there's, yeah, maybe like-
So, I'd like to see some kind of landscaping plan for, listen, they can, in my opinion, they can keep, keep it there, just that it should be blocked from the road.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
I was, I was going to agree. I was also in that car, and you can see it from Further Lane.
Yeah.
And this is July, you know, so I, I worry about the winter months, um, so I would, I would be okay if there was a landscaping plan.
They did have, I will just point out that they did have more landscaping on the roadway side, however, the village asked them to remove it to allow some buffer area for runners and walkers on Further Lane, in case, for safety reasons, in case they needed to jump on the side. So they did have that area screened more, but they would be willing to add some more screening, um, in certain portions of it, where it thinned out a little bit.
You can come back with a landscaping plan, so we can't see it. I think, uh, I don't have any issues with, with it being lit at that point also. Board members, any other board members?
I would just make the point that, to the extent it's going to be lit, there should be constraints about the hours, which it can be on all night, and, and as, as part of the, the approval, there should be conditions in terms of the lighting, recognizing it's not a thing. Also, you know, for this elaborate, again, with the contractor issue, with this elaborate process you described about the sighting of the, and the approval and the like, the notion that, yeah, like, the village, so the village regulation somehow got overlooked in that process while it's being negotiated, is something, right? I don't think we want to set a precedent that, you know, uh, people should overlook the fact that there are rules in the village, so we, we, it just goes to the ongoing educational process that people, the, the board should state clearly that these things are considered structures and-
I, I just think a lot of people just don't realize that art is a structure, and so, and, I mean, we know this, but-
It's an issue the village needs to, needs to, uh, make clear as part of its public information campaign regarding-
So we're, we're going to leave this hearing open for the landscape plan, please, and, and we'll-
Any specific vegetation, or I could talk to Billy about-
I don't think it has to be, you know, Billy-
Or just continue what they have, just buffer, like-
I think just continue the buffer you have, it's just got to be a little bit-
I think obviously, if it's, if it's winter months, you don't want something that's deciduous, you want something that's evergreen, that will stay covered.
Yeah, which is basically what they have there.
If you can just get that to Billy, then we can-
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next hearing, please. No, we're going to wait for the landscape plan.
Yeah.
Application of Martin and Lori Scheinman, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-5-2-9.6, and David and Debra Roberts, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-5-2-9.4, for variances from Chapter 278 zoning to adjust lot lines and transfer 30,803 square feet of land area from Lot 1 to Lot 2. The subject properties are located at 189 Further Lane, Lot 1, and 74 Cross Highway, Lot 2, and located in R, um, 160 zoning district, requiring a minimum lot area of 160,000 square feet for the creation of new lots and adjustment of lot lines. Variances of 50,870 square feet and 72,589 square feet are requested from Section 278 3A 1 to transfer 30,803 square feet of lot area from Lot 1 to Lot 2. The property transfer reduces the size of Lot 1 from 139,933 square feet to 109,130 square feet, and increases sides, the size of Lot 2 from 56,607 square feet to 86, 87,411 square feet, where the minimum required lot area is 160,000 square feet. A 109-square-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3A 9A to permit 17,482 square feet of coverage on Lot 2, where 17,601 square feet will be the maximum permitted. A 10.1-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3A 3A to permit the residence to be located 59.9 feet from the front yard lot line, where the required front yard setback will be 70 feet. Variances are requested from Section 278 3A 5B and C to maintain the existing pedestrian walkway and bridge-type walkway extending up to the side, and maintain the existing pedestrian walkway and bridge-type walkway extending up, uh, up to the side, and rear yard property lines where the required side and rear yard setbacks for pedestrian walkway is 3 feet, and the bridge-type walkway is 20 feet. This project is classified as a Type 2 action in accordance with SECR and requires approval from the Village Planning Board.
Please.
Oh, and then I'll just state who's sitting.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. McGurk, Mr. McMullin, Mr. Rose, Mr. Baris, and Ms. Fitzsimons.
And for the, I mean, this has to go with the planning board, too, so. Do you want to make any comments, Tim, or we're, we're just looking at the lot line modification part of this.
Correct.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Elizabeth Baldwin, Essex Hefner &amp; Angel, Datalia Pasca, here on behalf of the Roberts and also the Scheinmans. This is an interesting application, and when I was first brought on, brought in on it, and I did my little background research, um, these lots originally were configured how we're asking to change them back to. So the original lot lines are what we are, um, the approvals that we are seeking now. Back in 19, or prior to 1988, um, the properties were owned, well, after that, too, but the properties were originally owned by, um, this, by one owner. And when he acquired, he originally, he owned 189, and when he acquired 74, 74 had the, had the tennis court on it. At the time, uh, Mr. Herbert, his main residence was 189, and he wanted to incorporate the tennis court into his main residence, and so he asked the, the zoning board at that time in 1988 if he could have a lot line modification to do that. Now, however many years later, the properties have, are since in two separate ownership, we're just asking for that lot line to, to revert back to its original, um, design. Not going to review all of the, the easements that are required as, as-
Beth, I don't think you have to, I don't, I don't think-
Yeah, we went through that already, so-
Yeah, I, I think, um, well, you know, I have no issues with giving the lot line modifications.
I don't either.
Sir Rose?
No, she-
Okay, Andy?
Just seems to make sense.
Just a question in terms of future lot modifications, so this was done in the past-
In the past, you didn't have to, they, lot line modifications on the village, you didn't have to go to any board. The, um, it just happened, and then what happened was is some people were doing lot line modifications, and the village had no clue that they brought the piece behind them, or they added a piece, and then they put this into the, into the code, where you had to come to this-
It's a cautionary tale for us going forward in terms of future lot line, uh, zoning lot modifications to keep in mind, that we don't want to see things coming back and forth all the time, so we should just try to make sure that they're, they stay rational.
And it was, it was part of the existing-
No, I, I understand. I'm, I have no problem with this application, it's just, it's an interesting instructional case for, you know, no doubt we will see future lot line modifications.
Sure we will.
Suggestions, we should keep this situation in mind in our future deliberations.
So, um, a motion to close the hearing. Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the last hearing of the day.
Application of Hook Pond LSJ LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-8-14-12, for variance in accordance with, with Chapter 278 zoning to permit a third story. A variance is requested from Section 278 2B 1 to permit the conversion of an attic into a story, resulting in a residence containing three stories, where two stories is the maximum permitted. The subject property is 143,198 square feet in size and is located at 16 Hook Pond Lane. The project is located in Residence District R160 in FEMA Flood Zone AE Elevation 12 and Zone X. This project is classified as a Type 2 action in accordance with SECR. And then I'm just going to state who's sitting.
Who's sitting on it?
Uh, Mr. McGurk, Mr. McMullin, Mr. Rose, Mr. Baris, and Ms. Fitzsimons.
Good afternoon, Jonathan.
Hi, good afternoon. So there's a, I'm not sure if it's under construction or not yet, but there's an active building permit for a house on this property. The house, uh, everything that, we're not seeking a variance from what was approved on that, under that building permit. The approved, approved house that I think is under construction is 10,000 square feet, or 15,000 square feet would be allowed, so it's significantly under what the maximum GFA would be otherwise. What we're trying to do, uh, and there is a widow's walk in that active building, building permit, or, or deck, and what we're trying to do is access that deck from inside the house and not change the design. We thought we could simply go through the attic, but as it turns out, we cannot go through the attic, uh, as attic, it has to be habitable space, so we're asking that we could, uh, essentially sheet rock in or make habitable 271 square feet with inside the attic. There would be absolutely no change, uh, from the outside. So looking at this house, it would appear no different than what is permitted by code. Uh, we're simply looking to, uh, to access the widow's walk, and to do so, we have to convert a portion of the third story, 271 square feet, into habitable space. It also triggers a need to sprinkle the entire house, which we're willing to do.
The, the current, um, your patio or your roof decker, um, it faces the pond, it doesn't face any of the neighbors, I, I'm assuming, so I, it's not there. We, I was at the site last week, and it's fully under construction. So, but it's going to face, it's going to face south.
It faces south, and, um, perhaps, uh, Reed, last name is Reed, at 21 Hook Pond, I think, but I don't think anybody could actually see this from their properties.
Okay. And he has the right, if we didn't grant this, he has the right to put up an outside, an outside staircase, am I correct?
Correct. Or we could, or we could redesign it. We have another 5,000 square feet potentially to build, so we could try to redesign the house in a way that, um, did not allow us to go through the attic. This is simply trying to use what's there to access the attic, uh, to access the widow's walk.
And the space in the attic will not be hav-, it's, it's going to be called habitational, but it's just plans to have closets for storage, is that-
Only 271 square feet, and the idea is, we had to sheet rocket in, and, uh, so that's, right now, the plan is to just have storage up there, and we'd be willing to covenant-
Will we condition that on something?
Yeah, 100%. There's absolutely no intent to, uh, do anything other than get to the, the deck.
I think, board members, anybody have any questions?
You said that this roof deck is already there?
Well, uh, John, it's not there yet, right?
No, it's not there.
Nothing's built, nothing's built, it's a, it's an excavation.
It's a one big-
Permitted deck, everything, everything meets code. Uh, it was just a snafu on our part, which was that we thought we could access it through an unfinished attic, and we learned that we can't do so without finishing that, that little connection.
Okay, let's, uh, please come to the, please come to the podium, and you're going to have to state your name, and we're going to have to swear you in here, please.
Right here.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Juan Ocampo, 12 Hook Pond Lane.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Ocampo. Good afternoon.
Thank you, board members, thank you, chairman. We live directly across the street, my wife and I, from 16 Hook Pond Lane. 16 is a somewhat higher piece of, uh, land than, than ours. The house, uh, that is being constructed looks directly over our pool and our screened-in porch, where it's been most of the time. The concerns that we have, and I think it's shared by some of our neighbors, is, um, whether this patio, I mean, this deck would overlook either our pool, our area, et cetera, or anyone else. If it's looking out over the pond, um, we have no objection with the owners being able to have that view, uh, at the elevation. The question here is whether, you know, it basically would, would, um, destroy our privacy. And, and therefore, anything that would make it easier to access is something that would be a concern to us. Another concern that we have, and I think it's, um, some of my neighbors have also voiced this, I don't know if they've brought it up with, with the board or not, is that another property also has, in the neighborhood, um, has a roof deck with outdoor speakers and with some lighting. And when you put these things up at that elevation, um, sound and light carry very, very far. And it really can be something that is, um, you know, you know, very unsettling for the neighborhood. That has happened in the past, and what we would, uh, like to see is, to the extent this is approved, that there be limitations in the type of lighting and that they do not in, install, um, loudspeakers up there. That would be the request that we have for the reasons that I've stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ocampo, for his comments.
Can we, can we work on-
Yeah, we, we want to be good neighbors. It's a small type, as everybody knows, that's a very, uh, small area, community by itself, and we're willing to covenant that we have no outdoor speakers on the property.
I don't think the board has any issues with this, but can you just, can we keep this open till next month, and then just go through the plans with the neighbors to show them how it faces out on the pond, and give them a lighting solution, if that works, so we can-
The neighbors who reach out to me, uh, who are not here, because I, I actually have spoken to a number of neighbors, and of course, happy to keep the record open, but I just want to do say that perhaps Mr. Campbell can call me or go to the, it's obviously part of the, the record at Village Hall, he can go speak to Billy Hayjack. But I do want to make sure I state that we, we're happy to have no music on the, um-
Yeah, I, I understand you trying to work-
I also want to say that it does face south, like you had mentioned. Mr. Ocampo is to the north, so it's on the, he's on the north side of the house, so, uh, he won't see the deck, but I, I understand its, uh, concerns regarding music and lighting.
Maybe you two can get together, you and Jim, Mr. Farbert, and go through the-
Yeah, well, we're actually just willing- Yeah, well, we're actually just willing to say no music, and also, I guess dark sky compliant lighting would probably be the easiest, but I think there has to be some sort of lighting, so no, no spotlights, or something. But feel free to contact me, and-
I have a question for Billy and the building inspector, in terms of roof deck, what the regulations are in terms of roof decks, and in terms of lighting, music, structures, there may, the issues that have been raised, and access to roof decks, is this, because there's a precedent, is this a presidential case of providing a third-floor habitable space for the purpose of getting access to a permitted roof deck? So roof decks are permitted, I mean, this is not a question for you, John, it's a question.
Oh, yeah, I'll let you lead us to speak, but I know personally, I have had one application previously before the board on Seven Chauncey, almost the exact same scenario, which was approved.
But I think it's a question of understanding what's allowed, and it may be something that, in terms of lighting and music and the like, that needs to be addressed in code.
Good morning, Billy Hayjack for the board. I'll try to answer your question, although I don't have the noise ordinance memorized, but, so, the code permits, I mean, if you can design a house to comply with the height regulations, there's no restriction on where you place a deck. So if you can achieve a deck at the second story, or even on the top of the roof of your house, and it complies with the height limitations, which are also a little, not simple, I would say, to comprehend, but then you could have, I mean, you have to have, if you have a doorway leading access to it, my understanding is state code requires a light for every doorway, you have to have a light above, you know, outside or above a doorway for each, so you're almost required to have lighting, or you are required to have lighting there. Excessive lighting, our code requires it to be dark sky compliant, so if there's lighting there, it should be dark sky compliant. In terms of music, you can have speakers, as long as you don't violate the noise ordinance, so, and the noise ordinance is, it can't be heard, I think it's, I don't know, I shouldn't quote it, because I don't know it verbatim, but it's about annoying neighbors, if you annoy your neighbors, you're violating the noise code.
And what about access, how does one, if one has a roof deck on the top of one's house, how does one get to it under the code without a variance for, in this situation?
Do an exterior staircase.
Yeah, I could do that.
I mean, there's plenty of design, I'm sure Jimmy can even explain them better than I can, but there's, I'm sure there's lots of ways to solve, it's a design challenge, so you could have an exterior staircase, you could have in what would look like an interior staircase, but is technically not interior finished space, which would lead you up to the, up to the deck or roof deck. And some decks that you look at are not technically roof decks, they're probably above the floor plate of the second floor, but they're not technically on the roof, they just appear to be high in the sky.
So, okay, I'm no less confused than I think I was before I asked the question, but it would be useful-
Mission accomplished on my part.
You're saying it's confusing, but I think it would be useful, it would be useful at some, to understand exactly what is permitted and required, because it sounds like there's a-
Well, it was permitted. They didn't come to us, I don't believe, for a variance on the roof deck.
No.
So I think it's permitted, it's just-
But how does, how does one design?
It's a design question, I mean, it's not, you can, there's lots of different ways you could design a deck.
Design access to it without having to get a third-floor habitable-
You just put a staircase on the outside.
I think Mr. Tarbert said there's, that's a possibility, but then they may expand. Is that what you were saying, that your client has considered an alternative?
Yeah, I mean, so, originally, we didn't realize you couldn't go through an attic, so we designed it this way. It would, to not get the variance, would force a redesign, but there's many ways we could access the roof deck, that did not include going through the attic, it would just be ugly to design the house. There's an advantage to having these roof decks, is that it breaks up the massing, so there is, there is probably some design or aesthetic benefit to roof decks, but they're perfectly permitted, this is a legal roof deck, it's-
Right, no, I'm not questioning the legality of the roof deck, I'm just confused, so there's a property on Apicog that has a roof deck, that doesn't have, I don't, I haven't been on the property, but it doesn't have, as far as I can tell, an external stair, but it has access, it must have-
Patches, right? Like, I don't, I don't know, that might be the way to do it.
So, there's-
There's a way you could design a staircase that's not finished habitable space, that gets you to a roof deck. The code permits a certain, a certain percentage of your roof above, so if you have a flat-roof structure, the, your allowable height is reduced based on the size of your property, so it's a graduating scale. The smaller the property, the lower the house height, that's permitted by code. Within that criteria, if you qualify as a flat-roof structure, the roof height is lowered by nine feet. So a traditional flat-roof modern house, the height is lowered to, by nine feet. However, our code permits a small percentage of that to be above the nine-foot rule, and that's for houses that, it was perceived to be for situations where you have a gable roof, or a gambrel roof, and you need a flat section of it in the middle to put your solar panels, or if you just need to widen the footprint a little bit, it was designed that way, for that specific purpose. However, there are creative architects, no offense, Jimmy, that, and Joseph, that will figure out ways to manipulate-
They're not creative, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll manipulate that, they'll use that provision to the best of their ability to achieve a result, and sometimes that result is what you have on Apicog, where you have what looks like a tower, that's actually compliant with the height rule, it's just their percentage that's allowed above, and it looks so big, because it's, I think it's only a one-story section of the house next to it. So you have this large protrusion from one story, so it, and that coupled with the railing makes it look, you know, it stands out. So that's how they accomplished it. But I believe it's in exteriors.
I mean, I need to come by for a tutorial on this, because I'm, now I'm really-
I butchered it, but I tried.
So, let's, let's-
Okay, anyway, not to belabor everybody's point, they're getting more down-
I think the short of it is that we absolutely, well, everything Mr. Ocampo said is 100% fair, no outdoor music, dark sky lighting, and to answer his question, this is on the south side of the house, looking away from his property, so there, I would, I think actually, you would be concerned about this, had it been looking down on a residential property nearby.
If it was looking north, I'd be concerned for the neighbors.
So I don't, I don't really think there's anything discussed between us, but I'm happy to do so.
I'd like to just go over the plans with them, and then we'll, I don't see there's any issues here, I don't think the board has any issues, I can't speak for them, but speak up if you do, and then we'll, if you just can reach out, and then we'll close the hearing next, so.
Sounds great.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Motion to close the meeting.
Some moves.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. And remember, next month, we have training.